Do you want me to go get the chairman?
Yeah.
Sorry about that. I didn't expect the conflict to arise.
Okay, the next matter on the agenda is Campanelli, 175-185 Campanelli Drive, 18-11, special permits, site plan review. The meeting notice. Notice is given by the planning board under provisions matched in law, chapter forty-eight, section nine and eleven, and the Braintree zoning ordinance, chapter one thirty-five, articles five, six, seven, eight, eleven, twelve, and fourteen. The public hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, June 12, 2018, at 7:15 PM at the Braintree Town Hall. The planning board will consider an application for special permits, use 135-601, watershed 135-609, site plan reviewed by the applicant, amazon.com. The applicant is seeking permission to operate a transportation terminal within the 200,000 square, plus or minus square feet area within the existing building and within exterior portions of the site, along with associated drainage, landscaping, parking, circulation, lighting site improvements. Property is 24.3 acres, has an address 175 to 185 Campanelli Drive, is owned commercial, watershed overlay protection district, and is identified as a business plan, ten thirty-four is plot one and two. You go forward. Oh, yes, I apologize. 175.
The applicant here, I'm here with Langen Engineering, Richard Burrow and Dan DeSario, who you will hear from in a while. There are several Amazon representatives here as well. And the landlord is represented by Bruce Levine and Frank Marinelli. As background on this, we're seeking approvals to operate a delivery station occupying a portion of the existing empty warehouse building and associated parking area at 275 Campanelli Drive, in the commercial watersheds, so we're seeking a special permit for use, watershed district permit for use, and site plan review. A delivery station is a last mile logistics operation. In a nutshell, it takes the labeled packages that are delivered from one of the company's upstream sortation or fulfillment operators, those of the large logistics operations, and it sorts them into delivery routes for delivery to customers in the surrounding area. This is an excellent productive use for what is now empty industrial space. Amazon is excited to have an opportunity to be part of Braintree business community and to contribute to the city's economic development and bring jobs to the city. Amazon plans to host a local job fair in Braintree several weeks prior to starting operations if it's approved.
We're aware that people...
Coming out, I got an audio problem.
Okay, all right. Is this better? Did everybody hear what I've said before?
Much better.
No? Should I... You want me to start or no?
Yeah, you can go. Just hold it close, that's all.
Yeah, the replacement, okay. So don't start again, just keep going?
Just keep going.
Okay, very good. We're aware that people have some questions and concerns about the proposed Amazon operation. We take those concerns seriously. We've met with the others in the business park multiple times to try to understand those, and we've worked on addressing them. We've hosted a tour of the site and walked them through the operations just this afternoon. We pledge to be good neighbors. Amazon will continue to listen to and address concerns, and we look forward to addressing your questions tonight. I'm going to ask Richard Burrow, the civil engineer from Langen Engineering, to walk you through the site plan, describe the proposed site changes, which are quite minor, and then I'm going to have Dan DeSario address the traffic study, which I know is an issue of interest to a lot of people. Richard?
Ended up, okay. Very good. Thank you, Mike. Good evening. Richard Burrow with Langen Engineering. So I'm just going to start with aerial photograph that shows the site back in 2014, because I think, you know, this building's been in existence for quite some time. I expect you're familiar with it. In 2014, the site had the warehouse building that continues to exist, but it also had an office building located in the southern portion of the site that was subsequently demolished. So the site that we have today is largely the same, except the office building is gone and that area has been paved. This is important because throughout the course of my explanation, I'm going to refer to the existing conditions. When we discuss the stormwater existing conditions, we're actually considering them in a more favorable way when the office building existed. That is what staff asked us to do. So going to the rendering, this shows the site plan. It shows the car parking surrounding the site plan. This area to be occupied by Amazon is in the darker orange color. The adjacent tenancy space is in the lighter color. There's 538 car spaces on the lot associated with the Amazon project. There's 191 car spaces in compliance with zoning for the future space adjacent to the north. So it's important to understand what this delivery station does and how it will work, and I think this is a good site for this use. I think we've been able to conceive a design that will work well. So on the site, there are a significant, significant number of parking spaces, and those spaces perform really two functions. There's employee spaces, that's 163 spaces in the southwest corner, and that's the people that come to work here within the building. Those people arrive, do their work, park their car, do their work, and leave. Those spaces are of typical dimension, nine by eighteen spaces with twenty-four feet aisles. The rest of the spaces on the site are known as DSP spaces. That is the delivery service provider. Those spaces are larger. They are ten by nineteen, because those spaces are used to park delivery vans in as well as park passenger cars in, and those have a twenty-six foot aisle. So the way it works is the drivers arrive, they park their car in an available space, they get into their delivery van, drive through the building, fill up with packages, and leave. So it's important, because, you know, you ask how big are other vehicles, you know, you guys are familiar with a Suburban, it's an eighteen-foot vehicle. These delivery vans are actually nineteen feet long, and they're over eight feet wide. And I'm sure if you drive a Suburban, I have a pickup truck that's pretty large, and I always look for empty spaces next to me, and that's not available here because we have the right number of spaces. So we need these larger spaces to allow this to work in a safe and efficient manner. So the way it will work is the access will be up, Campanelli Drive, the drivers will come, park their cars, get the delivery van, loop around to the back of the site, drive through the building, and leave on their delivery route. We have sufficient spaces for all of the delivery vans and their drivers on site. It's not that everyone has two spaces. The intent is these come in waves, and as people arrive at different times and move their vans at different times, other people come in and park within the spaces. In terms of stormwater management for the site, we are reducing the impervious coverage by over 5,000 feet as compared to the lot that existed, the development that existed when the office building was in place. You can see that we've added this impervious, sorry, this pervious surface largely concentrated in the parking lot to the south where the office building was, although we've also added some green space where we separate the truck court on the east side of the building from the through route to the parking lot on the north side. So where we can, we've incorporated new green elements to reduce the stormwater runoff. At the request of Conservation Commission, we're also adding two additional stormwater quality treatment units. So that will be three total on site when we're finished, if we're approved. We're putting new LED lighting on the site, you know, obviously that's more efficient from an energy perspective, but also from a safety perspective, it really helps our use of the site. There's no other utility improvements associated with the project outside the building. The truck circulation's pretty straightforward. Trucks will come in off of Campanelli Drive into the truck court, which is in the northeast corner of the Amazon portion of the building, back against the dock doors, and leave. The building currently has thirteen dock positions. We're going to use eleven of them. The two other existing spaces will be used for trash compactors. So that, and one other thing that I'm going to talk about is the circulation on the site, which is pretty important when we have all these different vehicular uses. So as I mentioned, the tractor trailers will come in, they have their own truck court that keeps them generally separate. The delivery vans will, you know, be occupied in the spaces, and then they'll drive around to the back of the building, the west side, drive through the building and leave. So you can see with this configuration, there is a drive aisle that would allow people to queue outside the building, and based on all of our calculations, that's more than enough queuing to avoid any vehicles backing up onto Campanelli Drive. Again, as I mentioned before, I think this is a good site for this use, and we have sufficient space for all the different vehicular movements that are going to occur on the site.
I don't...
Yeah, absolutely.
Dan DeSario is the traffic engineer.
Russell from Langen. Good evening.
And just let me know if you can't hear me. I will try my best to enunciate and project my voice. I think one of the things that everyone needs to realize as it relates to what's before you is that the plans that we've put before you for your consideration are night and day from what similar facilities like this that the applicant has opened in the last year or two. They brought us in to help them with how these things operate both outside the building, on the particular site they're situated on, as well as how they operate externally beyond the particular site in terms of traffic operations and the particular areas that they're looking to do these new facilities. So what you have before you is a facility that has parking for both their delivery vans, and I'll get into that in a moment, in terms of specific operations, their employees that work inside the building, and the truck docks that accommodate the trucks that would be bringing these packages into that facility to be sorted and ultimately loaded onto vans as well as passenger cars, which would be known as flex drivers, which I'll get into in a second. So I just want everyone to understand, there's been great time, energy, and forethought invested in this application before you, particularly as it relates to traffic, and the applicant, as well as our firm and the entire project team stands united with not only the town and the abutters, but ultimately, we want to make sure and ensure that the traffic that generates or comes from this particular facility is going to be handled in a responsible way and managed so that it doesn't create an adverse impact on the surrounding community, as you may be familiar with other facilities that have opened in recent years in the immediate area. This is not going to be that. So I always think it helps to just take everyone through what the actual operation's going to be, so that you're educated as to what that means, and hopefully that's going to lay a lot of concerns. So the major components in terms of traffic for this facility are the employees that will work on site, the DSPs, which are the delivery service provider vans, as well as flex drivers, which are, anybody in this room can be a flex driver for Amazon. It's almost like you're an Uber driver, but instead of picking up and delivering people, you're picking up and delivering packages to people's homes. And as you've heard from our attorney as well, as Richard earlier, this is, the nomenclature is last mile. It's a little bit of a misnomer, because it's not essentially the last mile that a package is going to experience in terms of leaving this facility and going to your home. The service area can be about forty-five minutes away from this particular site. So it's not essentially the last mile, it's the last mile plus, depending on where people live and where the packages are coming from this facility and ultimately where they're being delivered to people's homes. So in terms of a typical operation, in the morning, you're going to have about eighty-five employees that would be working on the inside of the building come to the site around between six in the morning and eight in the morning. They consist of dispatchers, people that help with the internal operation of the building. They consist of yard marshals that are monitoring operations outside the building, and it's those types of employees. So there are employees associated with the building. Inside the building, there are fifty-six loading spots that are arranged in essentially four rows of fourteen, give or take. So you can load at any single time fifty-six vehicles under that building. So in the morning, between eight and eleven approximately, and Amazon likes to maintain some flexibility in terms of when they start their operation, what's going to occur every thirty minutes is fifty-six DSP drivers will come to the site and park their own personal vehicle. They will then get into a DSP van that's sitting in the parking lot, and then drive that van over to the building and go into the building when they're called. They will then load their van, and once all the vans that are loaded in each of the rows, so again, rows of fourteen, plus or minus, once an entire row of those fourteen vans are completely loaded, they will then be discharged from the building and leave. So about every thirty minutes, fifty-six van drivers come in with their own car, they get into their own van that's parked in the lot, they drive their van over into the building, they load their van with packages, and then they leave. And then that occurs again the next thirty minutes. So in terms of peak hour trip generation, which is what traffic studies generally are based on, peak hours.
Yes, we know.
This facility, for all intents and purposes, will generate 112 trips in, which consists in the morning of the van drivers coming in in their own cars, two waves every thirty minutes, and 112 DSP vans leaving. That's going to occur every hour from about eight in the morning to eleven in the morning. And I say about, because Amazon may elect to move that earlier. Maybe it goes from seven to ten rather than eight to eleven. And the reason why I say they like to maintain flexibility, because they want to be reactive to the actual traffic conditions in the area.
Yeah.
Now, again, they've called us in to help them...
Yeah, no, we know, we know.
With their operations.
Yeah, please.
So they have committed to managing their traffic flow, and that commitment is going to consist of having people monitor the traffic flow along Campanelli, and if there's instances where there are too many vehicles, particularly vans, leaving the facility, and it's causing queuing at Campanelli and Granite, they can radio back to the facility, and they can start holding back some of those vans till the queuing dissipates. So there is going to be proactive management of not only the facility's traffic, but monitoring along Campanelli in terms of any queuing that's occurring. And if queues are occurring, they can hold back some of the vans that are coming out of the site. In addition, there's a commitment by the landlord to provide a traffic detail at the intersection of Granite and Campanelli. So we will have positive traffic control, not only for Amazon vehicles, but all the other tenants in the park and their vehicles as well. That commitment is for three hours a day for five days a week, and again, that will be deployed on an as-needed basis. The afternoon trip generation is going to be about the same. So during the evening, on the order of about 112 vans returning, they get in their own cars, and then they leave. So again, about 112 an hour. Now, the other component to this as it relates to traffic that is a significant generation is your flex driver operation. So once all the DSPs are done around eleven in the morning, the operation will transition to flex drivers. The flex drivers, again, we have fifty-six spots inside the building, but the operation's only going to use about forty-three. They want to leave a few spots open inside the building, because flex drivers aren't professional drivers. They may not be as familiar with the operation, so it's better to have a little bit of empty space inside the building, and it's a similar operation. Flex drivers will come in with their own vehicle, personal vehicle, but they're not going to park on the site. They will stage and then drive their own vehicle inside the building, and then load up their own vehicle with the packages that are assigned to them for their routes, and then as soon as their vehicle is loaded, they will leave. They will not be discharged in blocks of fourteen. So with the flex driver operation, it's load and go. Once you're loaded, you can go and leave the building. And that essentially is the operation during the day for the vans and the flex drivers. Overnight, around eight o'clock at night, nine o'clock at night, employees will come in, and they'll leave about six, and their purpose inside the building, and there are about 100 employees doing this, are to do the sorting of the packages that get delivered to this building overnight. So they are doing all the sorting of those packages, and they're getting those packages ready to be loaded into the vans as well as the flex driver vehicles in the course of a normal day. In terms of tractor-trailer deliveries, there will be about twenty that occur overnight, about four an hour, and they start rolling in around about 10 o'clock at night till about two in the morning, and you get about four an hour for about a total of twenty overnight.
Where would they be coming from?
We anticipate they're going to be on Route 93. They'll probably get off at the Granite Street exit and then work their way over to come to the facility via Campanelli. I've done a very detailed traffic study. I would be happy to answer any questions involving this study. We looked at the Granite Street corridor from Five Corners to the north, to Pond Street to the south. We looked at the traffic generation I just went over with you, and essentially, our conclusion is that this facility's going to generate about one new trip during peak hours every minute, at worst case, in any direction along Granite Street. We have also recommended, in terms of a permanent traffic measure at the intersection of Granite and Campanelli, to have a traffic signal installed, and this applicant certainly supports the installation of a traffic signal if it's deemed appropriate for one to be installed at that intersection. However, as an interim measure, we are committing to a traffic detail, police officer essentially, during initial startup, and that commitment for that detail runs with the lease that Amazon has with the landlord.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, good. All right, thank you. So as Dan talked about, and as I talked about before, Amazon wants to be a good neighbor. We have met with the neighbors. We understand they do have concerns. Dan mentioned a couple of the traffic management measures that the company has proposed. Another one also would be to have a hotline number essentially, contact information that the abutters would have, the town would have, in a real-time basis, they could give feedback if there was some problem, and Amazon would address it. So that was another, that was another proposal here. And a fourth thing is communication with the driver, establishing rules, training the drivers, making sure the drivers are aware of the rules, aware of conditions on operations, and managing that through their delivery service providers, and that would be provided before these workers started work and before the drivers started work on their first day on the job. So we've been up here until late night. I don't want to stay up here too long, and I wanted to just say respectfully, we believe we satisfy the standards of your ordinance for the relief we're seeking. We're happy to address any questions you have. We appreciate your attention. We're looking forward, as I said, to being good neighbors, filling this empty space, creating jobs and economic development for Braintree.
Thank you. Before I'm going to open up to the public, I just have some questions. There are other delivery companies that have opened up in the area, for instance FedEx, down Marina Bay, and in the process, and they have charted out plans and roads they're going to take and not going to take. Are you going to be able to chart that out? For instance, to get to 93 North, they set up a plan as to how the trucks are going to leave FedEx and Marina Bay, how they're going to down Commander Shay Boulevard, and how they're going to stay on the main roads, and they're going to be prohibited, as well as the delivery drivers, from cutting through neighborhoods to get to a scene. Are you going to be able to chart that out too, so tractor-trailers coming in, tractor-trailers leaving, delivery people leaving, won't be, will be charted as how they're going to leave that facility and move forward?
We can certainly address that. We'll take, we'll take that back and get you an answer.
As far as the traffic engineer, I'm fully aware of what they, no, you don't have to get up and talk right now. Let me just say, I'm full, okay, I'm fully aware of what that's going to, I will let you know, I work with FedEx as far as their lawyer, and I know what we had to go to, to make sure the Commander Shay Boulevard, Marina Bay wasn't impacted by the trucks coming in and out. And I will say this, again, I'm fully familiar with traffic studies. The numbers will work as far as the traffic study is concerned, but I've always said one thing, the numbers don't mean anything when I'm sitting in the light for four cycles. So we can all make numbers work, but when you're sitting in the light for four cycles, that's concerning. But I also, we have the fact, this is usually the Bradley Warehouse, when Bradley was 100%, and there were tractor-trailers coming out of there day and night. I remember, I actually worked there too, so I'm familiar with the tractor-trailers, the traffic going in there. You might want to consider staggering, I know what Amazon wants to do as far as leaving at 7:30, but you may want to stagger the exit for later on, because Amazon delivers up to eight o'clock at nighttime. So you may want to consider staggering that exit, so that you're not right coming out of the Braintree Five Corners at the exact same time where everybody else is. You may want to consider studying that too. If you move the hours to maybe, maybe less number of trucks leaving at seven, eight o'clock in the morning, and spread that, I know that's what FedEx is doing, they're spreading out longer, so they're not, it's all on impact in, in the morning when all the traffic is there. So you spread out longer. You may want to consider that.
And Amazon's always revisiting and, you know, promoting flexibility in their operations to respond to things.
No, and I, I, yes and no, I'd rather kind of look at not a response to the issue when it happens, and maybe addressing the issue prior to it happening. We, yeah, so...
I think, I think until we, we've seen it operate, we, we won't know exactly where those issues are.
I know, I understand that, but seven, eight o'clock, there's no denying that is a peak time, and adding fifty trucks in the morning at that time is going to just create more havoc. So you may want to consider maybe spreading that out longer in the morning for the exit sequence to take, maybe drag out more so that it's less flow coming out in the mornings.
And to be clear, those are just delivery vans, they're not full...
No, I understand. The tractor-trailers will be at nighttime.
That's right.
Yeah. Well, that's exactly, that's what FedEx does too. They have the tractor-trailers coming at nighttime, and they have the smaller vans leaving in the morning, but they stagger it, so it doesn't... But they stagger it so it doesn't back up, you know, all the streets out there. You may want to consider it, you know, just look at those numbers, so. All right. But I'm going to open up to the public now. If they want to make any comments, I'd ask you to come up here. Identify yourself, any question, comments you may have.
So my name is Chris Iorio. I am a business owner, a resident of Braintree. My parents live in Braintree and I have a niece that goes to the Braintree Public Schools. So I'm looking at this from a variety of perspectives. So I, we did meet with Amazon, just today actually, I met with Dan, Eric and Jim. And they seemed like great guys. They were very courteous, showed us around, explained the operation. Amazon, of course, is an amazing company in a lot of ways. It does 40 to 50% of the e-commerce in the United States. In the Seaport, it has quite a few tech jobs, state-of-the-art. And of course, there's tremendous hype about their second headquarters, which is really is a city in itself. 50,000 jobs, $100,000, you know, I think is the average pay. And there's a lot of excitement about Amazon. Anything that's related with Amazon creates tremendous excitement. And I think some of that excitement has been transferred to this facility. And I don't think it deserves that transfer. Because unfortunately, what you're getting with this facility is pretty much the opposite of what you think of Amazon. There is very little technology in this facility. And there today, the only automation there was, was they had conveyors that had motors. There's only a handful of full-time jobs. I think the total of full-time jobs is 10 to 15. And maybe only five to eight are during regular working hours. The balance being overnight. And there, well, it doesn't seem like there's going to be any remarkable improvements to the facility as well. There's no major investment there. It's going to basically be a facility where they load vehicles and send them out. So what are we getting? We're essentially getting a last mile delivery courier facility. What's in there, as just described, you're looking at 300 third-party delivery vans. These are not Amazon employees. And it was mentioned, other facilities we had problems. The most famous one in our immediate area is a facility in Dedham. It is a much smaller facility. There are only, it's only 60,000 square feet versus the 200,000 square feet facility that is proposed. And it has quite a bad reputation. One article described as marauding white vans. So you have to wonder what impact this will have, this large facility have because it is 3 to 400% its size. Flex is an interesting concept too. That is going to actually be the most numerous delivery vehicle. Flex drivers are essentially Uber drivers for packages. So when you add it all up, you take the 300 van drivers and the 500 Flex drivers. You have the better part of 1,000 vehicles that will be traveling or operating out of 175 Camp Valley Drive, and that's the start. If you add it all up, the total vehicles coming and going, entering onto Grant Street during the day, you have the amazing number of 2,200 that will be turning onto Grant Street. Start times are important to note too because it seems like there's some uncertainty exactly how the facility will operate. Today, during the tour, I was told a start time of 6:30 to 7:30, but just now I was told a start time of 8:00 to 11:00. So it seems like there's still a lot of details to work out. So these vehicles, the 2,200 trips a day, will be spilling onto Grant Street. And when you think about it, is there any more important artery into Braintree than Grant Street? I mean, you have hundreds, if not thousands, of residents which get home via Grant Street. You have dozens and dozens of businesses that get to their business and employees of those businesses via Grant Street. The South Shore Plaza is serviced primarily by Grant Street and all the other businesses across the street from the plaza at the Hyatt. Not to mention, it's the main entrance for the high school. And also consider that you have a new sports complex, massive new sports complex about to begin construction on. So have we factored that traffic in? Five Corners, probably one of the most important intersections in Braintree and also one of the most congested. Many times already now, if you go at the wrong time of day, you'll be waiting, you know, for light signals just to get through it. So it's not a question of, you know, is this going to create a problem? It's really, what is the degree of additional congestion it's going to cause? Because adding 2,200 vehicles is not going to improve the situation, which at certain times of day is a disaster. Be mindful too that the high school gets in at around 7:00, 7:00, 7:15. And it looks like that's within their beginning operating hours when they'll be releasing their batches of 56 vans. And here's a visual for you. What does 56 vans look like if you would line them up? You take a van, leave a van space and add another van after that, and you line up 56 vans. It would be almost seven and a half football fields long. Can you imagine that merging onto Granite Street during peak traffic hours? Also consider the effect it would have on Franklin, Pond Street, Union Circle, Washington Street. They're all going to see more traffic. And I think there's a fundamental difference too in the way other facility companies have operated out of 175 Camp Valley to what is being proposed now. And I think it comes down to density of cargo. The way Amazon's proposing to work here, especially with the Flex cars, is extraordinarily inefficient. Because these are just regular personal cars. They're not designed to move cargo. So for example, take two Camrys, which I guess would be a typical Flex vehicle. They're 16 feet long. Multiply that by two, you're at 32 feet. What can they hold for cargo? Well, you have to factor out the weight of the driver and they weigh different. So we're at 1,500 pounds approximately, more or less. What does a 26-foot box truck contain, which is only 26 feet, is actually shorter? It can move 17,000 pounds. So what is the difference there? You're looking at a box truck moving 1,000% plus the freight of their Flex couriers. And that's why it's such an incredible burden for the streets. It's actually extremely inefficient in moving cargo. And it's not even comparable to the old distribution facilities. Traffic study also, it seemed like, I think some of the data it's based off is old. It looks like some of the data was coming from 2015. It was done in September. We're not sure when it was done in September. And that can have a tremendous effect on what the traffic is. Also consider now that traffic is a lot heavier today than it was before. Now, there was a traffic study we saw, it was very brief. And the conclusion was it's only going to add one vehicle per minute, which doesn't sound like a lot. Of course, this is going to come in waves, which has already been disclosed. It's not going to be one a minute, 24 hours. It's going to be coming out when the doors open, 56 vans. But when you do the math, 56 vans going and 56 vans coming, because those are the drivers of the vans, and that's done every 30 minutes. So every hour, it's not one a minute. It's actually more like four a minute, just shy of four. Because 56 plus 56 coming, plus 56 next 30 minutes, plus 56 is approximately four a minute. So what's the difference between one and four? Well, that's, four is 400%, you know, the number of one. So you have to wonder what else is off by 400%. Parking, they say there's ample parking. I'm not so sure. They have 300 vans and the van drivers have 300 cars. So right now, you're at 600. I know they'll be coming and going. They're going to be missing each other a little bit, but just follow this. So 300, 300, 600, they have less than 600 spaces. And that doesn't include any workers in the facility or any vendors or any trailer storage. It seems like it's going to be very tight from the start for parking. And what happens when they're tight on parking? What happens when they say, okay, hold the vans, don't put them out on Grant Street? Where are they going to go? They're going to stay at the lot. And they're already pretty much at the capacity. And it's not as if a person's going to drive to the lot and then be magically transported into the van and then the car parks itself. There's going to be some valet service there or shuffling. And with them already being tight, I don't see how they can sort of choreograph the control they're going to need reliably all the time, especially if part of their lot is covered with snowbanks and guaranteed it's not going to start piling up onto Camp Valley Drive. So, and one of the comments they made is this is an empty building and that it would be a good use for it. The reality is, I don't know how familiar people are with the commercial real estate market right now. It's white-hot. There shouldn't be any empty buildings. There's people desperately looking for space. So there are other uses for this site that would be more in line with what its intended use is and what the current zoning would be more in line with. So really, this is an entirely new use that yields oversized traffic and safety concerns. And with only five to eight full-time daytime Amazon jobs, its jobs and economic benefit will be quite limited. So, thank you. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Justin Parata. I represent several businesses in the area. I submitted a letter to the board, which I believe is in the record. I think there are some legal questions here that need to be answered before you even get to the issues of traffic and traffic safety. First of all, does this fit the definition of a transportation terminal? If you look at that definition... Oh, I thought, I was going to say something, sorry. If you look at that definition, it talks about buses, trains, trucks. The consistency there is that they all are professional drivers, not drivers that are going to be using this facility. Flex drivers, which are like Uber, drivers of vans, who, you know, it's not a highly regulated industry, the way the trucking industry is, the way the rail industry is, and the way the busing industry is. I doubt when that definition was drafted, they anticipated this type of facility. So if it doesn't fit the definition, then they're not even entitled to be considered for a special permit. And I think there's a question there that really needs to be answered first. Secondly, they're relying on some variances from 2009. There's several non-conformities with the structure. So they're relying on some variances for 2009 that were granted for a totally different situation. There were two buildings on the property. The hardship that was alleged was actually those two buildings. If you look at the plan and other documents that were submitted with that variance application, it talks about the use being a warehouse and an office building for the building that's not there anymore. A warehouse, of course, is an allowed use. So where they're now seeking to completely change the use, assuming it is a transportation terminal, I think there's some question there, they shouldn't be able to rely on variances that were granted for a wholly different use, for a wholly different layout and structure on the property, both in terms of the property itself as divided into two and as a warehouse use instead of an office, or warehouse and office use instead of this transportation terminal idea. So I think they need to go before the ZBA and get some new variances.
Just so clear, you said it's not a warehouse?
They don't, they don't apply for it as a warehouse. They apply for it as a transportation terminal. If you look at their application, that's what they're saying it is.
Mr. Chairman, if I may to clarify that point. Previous to the filing of the application, we had Mike Giamo submit a narrative and we had Town Council John Gold Rosen weigh in on the use. So that's how we arrived at this application.
So there is a, so that, there's an opinion from Town Council on that piece of it?
Yes, there is.
Okay, thanks. I wasn't aware of that. So as a transportation terminal, that kind of dovetails with this issue of do those variances apply? Those variances were granted for a warehouse and an office with two different properties. Now they want to use it as one property for a transportation terminal. I think they need new variances. There's other non-conformities which they say are allowed because the structure is pre-existing non-conforming. Because they're altering the structure, even only interior, even only on the interior for a new use, the case law is that they need to go before the ZBA to get a determination that the change will not be more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. That's the standard on that. Anytime you seek a change to a pre-existing non-conforming structure, that permission is needed from the ZBA. I also think there's a question on the frontage. It doesn't appear that there's a defined way to apply the frontage in the bylaw. What they appear to have done is calculated the entire circumference and width and length of Campanelli Drive that goes into the property. If you did it that way, there would be sort of four fronts to the property. Rather than where the property sits, where the structure sits, fronts actually on the cul-de-sac itself. And so the frontage calculation, it seems, should actually be the width of the cul-de-sac or maybe the circumference, but not the entire body of Campanelli Drive, so to speak. I don't have anything else unless the board has any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward and speak?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Frank Marinelli, I represent Equity Industrial Properties, the owner of 175-185 Campanelli Drive, the site in question. I'm pleased to have with me this evening the principal of Equity Industrial, Bruce Levine, and also Hunter Emerson from Equity Industrial. Just to be clear about the perspective of things, 175 to 185 Campanelli is over 24 acres of property located in Braintree's commercial industrial zoning district. 175-185 Campanelli is part of an industrial park that was developed over 50 years ago. The site is located at the westerlymost end of Campanelli Drive, the very end of the cul-de-sac. It's about a half mile from the Granite Street intersection. And it has upon it a vacant warehouse distribution building that is over 450,000 square feet. 175-185 Campanelli is by far the largest property in an industrial park that has approximately 15 total properties, mostly warehouse distribution-type industrial properties themselves. Over the years, 175-185 Campanelli, as alluded to by the chairperson, was the headquarters for Bradley's, hosted hundreds of vehicles, hundreds of trucks and cars, and then stop and shop, United Liquors. So it has had an intense use in terms of motor vehicles, trucks and cars. The Google Earth photos were provided by Equity Industrial. And you can see the hundreds of cars, trucks, vehicles back in April 1995. And the second chart over here is April 2005. As was stated by the engineer, there was even a four-story office building since demolished. Imagine the number of vehicle trips associated with a four-story office building. And that was connected by Ariel Bridge to the Mammoth Warehouse. So again, hundreds of cars and trucks, one of the largest industrial properties in the town of Braintree. Equity Industrial has owned and managed commercial industrial property for decades. They paid approximately $22 million for this property, made an investment in this town. Most of the other 15 or so industrial park properties, as stated, are many times smaller, not just in terms of the land, some an acre and a half, two acres, three or four acres, but in terms of the buildings as well. So of course, at 175-185, you'll have a larger potential use. Our view is that to have the entire site used by one or two companies is superior to having, for example, what was suggested, some other use, et cetera. That's not something that we have to do. There is no covenant in this industrial park that says some owner gets to say that you get excluded. This is an appropriate site for what Amazon is proposing. Amazon, one of the most prodigious companies in the world, wants to lease over one-half of the vacant 175-185 building. This is positive for the town of Braintree. Because first, you've heard of the mitigation that Amazon, Mr. DiSario, Langin, the applicant, Eric Murray, has come up. He's done neighborhood meetings multiple times. They've studied and they've diligently, diligently proposed the mitigation that Mr. DiSario described, which was we, the landlord, pay up to 15 hours per week, each and every week, for police details. the landlord, pay up to 15 hours per week, each and every week, for police details. That's an efficient control. If it evolves to a traffic signal, they've also agreed to that. Secondly, there is an increase in the commercial tax base with the investment being made. The statement was made to the effect that there's no investment in the building, et cetera. Mr. Levine, his company with Amazon, the investment will be over $10 million. So, now you have an assessed value in the range of over $30 million, not just the acquisition price. That's good for Braintree. Commercial tax base is good for Braintree. Commercial tax base keeps the residential tax rate, tax base in check. Thirdly, it does create jobs. And there were comments about the type of jobs. Well, the prior speaker has warehouse-type employees. What is wrong with the transportation and type of jobs that are being created here? You can't make a distinction on the type of jobs. Jobs are jobs. Just ask the person that's getting the check and has the job. They value the job. This creates hundreds of jobs. As I said, there'll be millions of dollars invested in the property, and they have presented, again, their substantial mitigation and traffic management plan. Who has the largest stake in operating properly? Obviously, Amazon. And they've described for you what they've done diligently in terms of the traffic study that we've seen, and we've seen the meetings with staff and with the neighborhood. And they have described the mechanisms that they will use, the communications they will use. They have 24 acres to control the flow off of the site. They will do it. And we have the police details, and then the mitigation of a two-phase light if necessary. So, we are obviously asking for the board to support this project. You have one of the largest buildings in town that is vacant. We have one of the greatest companies in the world that wants to occupy over one-half of the building, and we ask for your support of this project, which is based in fact and reports and data that you have in the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I rebut a couple of the comments that I heard from the abuders and the abuders council, quickly?
Let's get through. You can keep those in mind. Let me get through and see who else wants to speak first. Anybody else wants to come forward and speak? Please come forward, identify yourself.
My name is Brandon Rahal. I've just moved recently to Braintree. I've been around the community for about four years. My position is a field service engineer, so I do a lot of traveling, mainly to and from the Boston-Cambridge area. So, of course, traffic is, you know, one of my concerns, but sort of at the outset of this meeting, it was actually the least of my concerns, believe it or not. I want to try and remain neutral coming in here, hear both sides of the arguments, which, of course, Amazon will have the chance to do after the public forum. But I'm less concerned more about the traffic issue and more about the quality of community enrichment that is proposed, this facility coming to Braintree. I mean, had a lot of preparation for this, not like these two gentlemen have, but just a guy with a cellphone. And I know Amazon's done a lot of things, a lot of wonderful things for a lot of communities. They also, you know, have had some issues in other communities, particularly other, like, larger facilities and other poorer communities. But, like, for example, the, I think it was called the Economic Policy Institute did a study of, you know, about 100 or so of the facilities like this across the country, and showed while there was an uptick in job creation, like, in warehouse and distribution districts, it was sort of met by an offset of lower job creation or job leaving in other industries, and no net gain of positions being created. I would actually argue, perhaps somewhat uninformed, that, yes, one can argue of the quality of positions that are being generated. I don't think a job is just a job. Like, to a person with no paycheck, a paycheck's fantastic, but there's something to be said for the benefits that are given or not given, the kind of policies for, you know, stock option investments, long-term retention of employees, things like that, which Amazon does not always have a great track record of maintaining. So, I guess top level for me is what this facility brings to Braintree as a whole, in terms of its tax revenue, the number of and quality of jobs that are being produced, not just in their field, but as a whole. And yes, of course, the traffic generation is an issue. And I guess I just hope to hear a more convincing argument than I've heard thus far. Thank you.
Excuse me. Can we just get the address of this?
Yeah, your address, I'm sorry.
130 Peach Street.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else wish to come forward? Please come forward.
Charles Corris, District One Counselor, Mr. Chairman. I think that my main responsibility is to make sure that the traffic situation is kept under control, and that's something that I will work with the applicant on, to make sure that we have something in place that protects the neighborhood, because this is my neighborhood. But I think as far as the commercial property is concerned, I mean, we have a situation here where, as you said before, Bradley's and other companies were there. And I remember as a kid, the number of tractor-trailer trucks coming out of there. I think this is a little bit different situation, but regardless, I mean, we're talking about an industrial park, pretty much, commercial building. So, I think we have to find a way of making sure that we just have stopgaps in place so that we don't end up with a traffic nightmare. So, that's something that I will be doing as the district counselor. And I know that you guys will be doing your due diligence, as you are always, and I appreciate the hard work that you guys are putting into this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward and speak? You don't have to raise your hand. You can just come forward.
Good evening. My name's Bethany Savella. I'm a resident at 536 Pond Street. I was just wondering what environmental impact there might be from all the vehicles, if they're idling, or what we can expect, especially with the high school and multiple daycares, if there's an environmental impact study for distribution centers, and what they do to the surrounding kids.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward? Okay. You can just come forward. Nobody has to raise their hand. All right.
Hi, my name is Chris Campbell. I live at 399 Pond Street in Braintree. I really didn't prepare anything. I just wanted to get up here to voice my opposition to Amazon opening. I live right across the street from Campanelli Drive, so I'm on that route every day. I know how important Granite Ave is. People funnel from Randolph, people from Braintree. There's lots of businesses here. There's the high school, the South Shore Plaza. This place is, it's very backed up. It takes me 15 minutes to get from, you know, Pond Street and Granite Ave just to the highway. And I can't imagine adding another 100 vehicles an hour. I forget the number. But it's just, it's a lot. And then also, the quality of the jobs is obviously an issue. These are not high-paying jobs. These are low-paying jobs. There's been a lot of articles in the New York Times about the quality of life at Amazon. A lot of workers are treated rather poorly, and they're worked very hard. So, I just don't think that this is really a great place for Amazon to put a facility, because we have a very high quality of businesses here in Braintree, and I think we should try to maintain that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Does the applicant want to...
I would like to rebut some comments. Just going back, I think Attorney Marinelli said it best about the job, so I'm not going to go into that. A job is a job, and for somebody who doesn't have a job, a job's a very important offering, and this will create jobs. The reference to other facilities, and particularly to a nearby facility, the Dedham facility made the press. It made the press about two years ago. There were some problems. I think that's a good story to tell, actually, because Amazon responded immediately to those problems. They worked with the town. They spoke with the neighbors. They met with the neighbors. They addressed the issues with the drivers. Some of the delivery companies that were causing problems are no longer working for Amazon, because Amazon has rules. They have standards, and they apply those standards. And when issues are raised, they respond to them. They'll do the same thing here. The fact that this facility is larger really has nothing to do. The problems in Dedham had nothing to do with scale of the operations, and they were immediately responded to. So, I think that's not an apt reason to be against this facility. There was a reference to 56 vans going out at one time. They're really not going to go out at one time. And as we explained today to the neighbors, there are four rows in the building. They will go out as each row is completed, so that's about 14 at a time. They can be controlled on-site. The yard marshal will have authority to control them on-site. So, you're never going to see a line of 56 cars heading into a blocked intersection. They're going to be held up. The other thing is, when they get to the light or the corner, the controlled, officer-controlled corner, they're not all going to go in one direction. They're going to split. So, you're not going to have a line going down Granite Street with umpteen vans in a row, seven football fields long. You're going to have maybe several at best going one way or the other, based on these queues that go out in staggered, in staggered time. Let's see. Attorney Parata raised some legal issues. I'd like to just comment on those. The use issue, I think, was addressed. We did come in saying we were a warehouse use. In fact, this is very similar to a warehouse use. The only thing is, the products are on-site for less time, and it's not stacked floor-to-ceiling with those products. So, anything we're doing here is something that could be done from a warehouse also. The town has the ability to issue a special permit for a transportation terminal use, and that's what Town Council said we were. We'll reserve our rights on that question, but we've applied for a special permit, and we believe we qualify to be granted a special permit. As far as the variance goes, there's no limitation on that variance related to use. That building has been on the site for a very long time. The issues that we're relying on the variance for have to do with dimensional issues related to the building, which has been in existence. We're improving conditions at the site. We're not exacerbating them. Those variances run with the land. The non-conforming use issue is similarly, that's not a valid issue at this site. This use would have a special permit, and we're not doing anything to alter the building. It's not being structurally changed. It's being built out. And as far as the frontage goes, again, this building has been there for however many years it's been there, at least 40 years, and that road has been there since that building was there. So, the frontage is the same as the frontage has always been. That's all.
Thank you. I just got one question. Is the distinguishing factor between warehouse and transportation, the time that the product is in there?
The warehouse, I don't have my bylaw with me, but the warehouse definition doesn't take into account the high volume of transmission. I think the definition actually says transmission of goods, and the warehouse is more storage-oriented.
Yeah, because when Bradley's was there, if trucks were delivering stuff, other trucks were being loaded and bringing it out to the stores. So, was it the length of time the product was there?
I am not exactly sure when Bradley's occupied the site and what the bylaw said then.
I would tell you it was in the 80s, because I was actually working there, I remember.
Yeah. So, we used to have a section in the bylaw that said everything needed a special permit, and this property was zoned industrial at one point. And then, we did have an old file for when they came in and did the office building part of it. But the particulars of that use, not having been involved and not having any record, I would be just speculating.
I see this more as a warehouse, warehouse and product that's coming in, being dropped off, picked up.
It's not really being stored, though. It's like in a...
So, it is a timeframe aspect.
It's, the storage tends to have a component of time. And to Mike's point, you know, stacking to the ceiling, my understanding in the lengthy discussions we've been having, what comes in on that truck tonight is going out tomorrow.
That's Amazon's business model.
Yeah. It's just like, kind of, almost moving it. Everything's constantly being in motion.
No, I understand that.
Versus like, oh, we got 42, you know, tires.
I understand that. I just want to, so the distinguishing factor is the actual timeframe?
They have other facilities that I think they might, that are more storage. Yes.
All right. All right. Well, that's, I just wanted to understand that. All right. So, I'm going to, do you have any question, comments at this time?
All right. So, just to pick a point, it's a 24-acre site, but half of it still needs another tenant. So, they don't have 24 acres. They have 12. And the other part of the building, actually, has even less parking. It's also 100, almost 200,000 square feet. I think we all know that a job is not a job. There are differences in jobs. There's full-time jobs with benefits that you can raise a family on, and then there are jobs like the flex jobs, which are arguably close, or maybe even depending upon the length you get below minimum wage after you factor in all the costs, because they pay $18 an hour for a four-hour shift, but that shift may take you five hours to do. Then, you've got to supply a car, gas, insurance, commercial insurance, even a lot of them don't have that, in order to deliver packages. That's a big controversy there. And you've got to maintain your car. So, when you factor all those costs out, you may be at minimum wage or below minimum wage.
Well, that's a contract. It's not an employee.
Yeah. Well, still, I'm just making the point that a job is not a job. There's a difference between full-time benefits, where you know you're going to get work every day, every week, so you can pay the rent, and there's a job where, if you're lucky, you get a slotted time on the app. And the flex jobs are the single most numerous job that this facility will provide.
Yeah. The accuracy of that is that a flex job, a person that delivers does start, is not required only to deliver by Amazon. They can deliver by a number of other people. So, they could have...
They could do Lyft. They could do Uber. I'm just pointing out...
No, no. So, what I'm saying is, if you're going to compare that, it's different than with regards to an employee. So, these are people that contract, but they contract with more, one individual, more than one company. They make a contract with delivery for Amazon, at the same time, doing Uber, doing Lyft. So, when we narrow it down to they're only making $18 an hour, and that's what they pay for their cars and stuff, the reality is, they could be making much more an hour because they have five other customers to deal in for. So, it's kind of really not accurate to say just $18 an hour, they have to pay all costs. If they have five other customers to deliver in for, it's much more than $18 an hour.
At the same time? I don't think you can deliver...
Oh, no, you can. You have five packages in your car. You deliver five different things. You're getting paid for each and every single one at the same time, aren't you?
I don't, I think they pay you four hours for $18. I guess there's no point in getting involved in that. My point is, a job is not, all jobs are not equal, and there's differences in the quality. And I'm saying, these are sort of like part-time and close to minimum wage jobs. It's a 24-hour site, but there's going to be another tenant on the other side, which is yet to be revealed. What is their impact going to be on the neighborhood? What is their impact going to be on traffic? And I already, I start off my initial presentation saying how great a company Amazon is. They're a leader in e-commerce, by far. They have incredible Amazon web services, which often is responsible for why they make a profit, actually. It's really sophisticated. But, you know, the United States is also an incredible organization. But you wouldn't want any US government facility to be put next to your home necessarily. So, not all facilities are the same. Not all jobs are the same. There's differences there. And, okay, 56 vans may not go out at the same time, but every 30 minutes, they need to push them out, you know, on average, onto Granite Street, because in another 30 minutes, there's another 56 vans coming. And, okay, it's not seven and a half football fields long. It's three and a half, if they go 50/50, which I don't think will be the case, because I think, as if you're familiar with traffic in Braintree, the way to go is the five corners. That gets you to Highway. That gets you to Route 3. That gets you to Franklin Street. That can even be even the Union Circle. So, people, can you imagine, you're trying to go somewhere, and all of a sudden, you're behind three and a half football fields, or maybe it's three. It's going to be a lot of traffic into a roadway, which is already overburdened, as it is, especially during rush hour. That's the end of my rebuttal.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, comments? Any comments, questions, comments?
I had a few questions for the Amazon folks. What reach-out have you done to the neighbors, to the neighborhood associations, or has there have been any?
In terms of the business association, we have had a couple of meetings with them to explain the operation and understanding that they're the most directly affected, because that's where the traffic is coming from. Beyond that, we've not yet had any discussions with other neighborhood groups, we've spoken with a number of city staff and city officials.
Okay, I don't think we can put that in a condition or anything like that, but we always suggest that you don't get in a situation like Dedham got into after the fact, a year after the fact, you're putting out fires, so, you know, the relationship now is important to reach out to these groups, and then we don't come back here with problems or other places with problems.
Understood, thank you. Another question I had was, somebody brought up environmental impact, has any been done, any kind of study that you know of by Amazon on the impact of this traffic as far as, like she mentioned emissions and things like that?
No, I mean, the traffic study gives you a good sense of the magnitude of that traffic, because the level of service coming through that intersection with a control is going to be roughly the same as it is now, so in terms of any environmental impact, it'd be similar to any other kind of traffic. We are in front of the Conservation Commission with respect to the site work, and so from that angle, the environmental impact is being looked at.
All right. And then, lastly, I'll just, if I can just say one more thing about what the chairman's earlier statement about considering staggering, if you've been to Five Corners at 8:00 AM or at 5:00 PM, it's not a fun experience to go through, and you add 56, or say, half of them go that way, 25.5, or whatever it comes out to, you're going to deal with a lot more traffic every hour. So, I just put that out there for you to think about going forward.
I mean, I know they want to run the most efficient operation, and if they're stuck in traffic, it's not efficient, so I'm sure they'll be flexible enough to adjust, to respond to those kind of conditions.
Okay, those are all.
All right, thank you. Remember, county, at this point?
I have a number of questions, Mr. Chairman, but I'm going to wait until the next meeting, and I'm going to recommend that we, I'm going to make a motion, in fact, that we continue this hearing until the next meeting.
All right, motion made, is the second motion?
Second.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Let us digest everything, we continue to the next meeting.
Okay, July 10th, thank you.
Is that July 10th?
Yeah, I just will say that we will cut everything off at 11, that's why we're moving this along.
Appreciate you.
No, no problem. Oh, yeah, I know, I know.
Hi.
What about the other guy, these guys on?
Yeah, let me talk to Frank now, and I'll give it to you.
We're cutting it off at 11.
And then we can follow up next week. Yeah, have a good night. Bye.
Thanks. I got the idea that he wanted him. When he was going like this, I know that means.
You can follow me up, follow up tomorrow with any questions, sir, yep.
Folks, we still have a meeting going on, so if you could just, if you were talking in the hallway, that would be great, thank you so much.
You're talking about well this time and DSTs?
I know.
Yeah, so that would be useful.
We're going to have it all broken down for the next meeting.
Thank you, Christine.
That's mine.
Is Bonnie Tan going to go on? Is Bonnie Tan still on the?
Right up here, Abby. This is right up here, Abby.
There's an ordinance to bring an associate member into the planning board. The Braintree Planning Board hereby gives notice pursuant to match and launch chapter 48, section 5, and 11 under Braintree zoning ordinance, chapter 135, articles 15. The public hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, June 12th, at 7:15 PM at the Braintree Town Hall. The purpose set herein is to review and provide a recommendation to the Braintree Town Council, order number 18-029, approve zoning amendment, article 5, and approve general audience amendment of chapter 2.770, subject to provisions of the actual launch, chapter 48, section 9, implementation of an associate member to a five-member planning board. Approve Town Council is on file, the Braintree Town Clerk, and reviewed by public. Ah, so we can waive testimony on this? Okay, we get it.
I think I would just ask the-
That's what I'm going to say.
Our recommendation is-
Yes.
To approve it.
Is there anybody in the public who wants to speak with regards to the associate member of the planning board? Okay, seeing none?
Let's get it.
Okay, seeing none. The board have any questions, comments? Seeing none, chair wants to have a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Is this second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair will motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Barley?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board.
Oh, wait, we just need to open, we need to read the notice. Attorney Marinelli, sorry.
Okay.
Where is that notice?
Aaron, right there.
Notice given by the planning board under provision, planning board under provision of matching launch after 48, section 9, 11, and the Braintree zoning ordinance after 135, articles 5, 6, 7, 8, 11, and 12, and 14. The public hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, June 12th, 2018, at 7:15 PM at the Braintree Town Hall. The planning board consider application for special permits, seek review and any other amendments to the planning board, finding conditions, decisions are record by the applicant Framar Properties of New England Academy Express LLC. The applicants are seeking permission to demolish existing structure, fuel tank located on the site, and to construct a new wash maintenance building and new fueling station, along with associated drainage, grading landscape, and screening, parking, circulation, and light sight improvement. The properties are 11.19 plus minus acres, have an address for 531, 533 Pond Street, and 35 Roxam Park Road, a zone commercial, water set overlay protection district, and identifying assistance plans 1038, 10, 1038, 10A, and 1059, 10.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Frank now, Hallie.
I take this, okay, there it is. Pleased to appear on behalf of Academy Bus and its related entity, Academy Express and Framar Properties of New England. With me is Dave Lemkel, Dave is the Vice President of Real Estate for Academy. Also here is Chris Wass, who is the Project Manager from Academy Bus, Steve Materis, Academy's Braintree manager, and our engineering team, Gabe Crocker, and Dawn Rose from CHA Engineers, and also Alan Ochman, who is our landscape architect from Ryan Associates. With the proposal, the Academy seeks to improve stormwater management and water quality, and upgrade the company's facilities at this commercially zoned site. By way of background, Academy maintains facilities up and down the East Coast, it is the premier bus company servicing Boston, Providence, New York, New Jersey, Philadelphia, Baltimore, Washington DC, Charlotte, Raleigh-Durham, Atlanta, Jacksonville, Orlando, Tampa, West Palm Beach, and Miami, Fort Lauderdale. A significant part of Academy's business is charter services for clients such as Major League Baseball, Red Sox, National Football League, the Patriots, Boston Medical Center, Brandeis University, Tufts University, Boston College, Boston University. Academy is the largest privately-owned and operated transportation company in the United States, it's celebrating its 50th year of serving the East Coast. It is well-known industry-wide for customer service and well-maintained new equipment. So, Braintree is fortunate to have Academy's investment in this 1960s industrial area. Academy and related entities employ over 2,000 people. Academy owns two contiguous commercial parcels, approximately 9.25 acres at 531 Pond Street, and another 1.94 acres at 35 Roxam Park Road. And those two pieces, this piece and this, are shown on the charts that we have here. First, as part of the application, the two commercial properties will be combined, creating an 11.9 acre site. 35 Roxam, previously non-conforming to open space, will become part of a combined site that provides 55% open space, easily complying with the 40% requirement. Academy will demolish the existing over 50-year-old wash service building, which is here on the southerly side, and you can see it, it goes north to south, and then superimposed on that is the new building, which is much smaller, it's going to be, the new wash building kind of goes east to west. So, the old building is over 6,000 square feet on the south side of the property, the new building's approximately 4,100 square feet. Also, the existing fueling station will be raised in a new fueling station, same capacity, will be constructed further away from the resource area. The anticipated circulation when a bus returns to the site is that the bus will enter the new easterly curb cut on the southerly edge of the property, so the returning bus will come in here, the new curb cut, which you can see on this further plan, this is the new proposed layout. You'll come right in, come right in this entry here, the new curb cut, and you'll circulate around to the wash bay. First, you'll be refueled, the bus will be refueled, will go through the wash bay, and then it will park in one of the slots at the southerly edge of the property. When it leaves, it will leave through the most westerly curb cut on the south side that you see, and so the circulation will be one-way in from the easterly curb cut, one-way out at the northeastly curb cut. If a bus is scheduled for preventative maintenance, for example, oil change, tire change, tune-up, the bus will enter one of five service bays in the existing building at 531, which becomes part of this site, and it will enter that building from the south side, from the service doors located on the southerly side of the building shown on the plan. Ingress, egress, to and from the five service bays is from the southerly side, as shown on the plan, there'll be grading to accommodate installation of sloped ramps into the building from the southerly side. Office space from the old building that's being demolished will be moved to office space in the westerly end of the existing commercial building. Offices accessory to Academy's business is a good use of that portion of the building closest to the resource area. In Academy's tenant space number five, there'll also be one bay door for parts delivery on the northerly side, and one door for smaller buses to enter the building for service. The commercial building at 531 has existed since the 1950s with approved additions in the 1980s, 1990s, and approved for partitioning into multi-tenant commercial building, with installation of overhead doors for commercial uses like Academy Bus, a non-residential garage used by right in tenant space number five. Patriot traffic is in tenant space number two, and has been in the building for years, and there are three other commercial tenant spaces. On the southerly side, again, the entire stretch that borders Roxam between the two greatly spaced curb cuts will be planted and landscaped, and will create a new aesthetic border at Roxam. Also, on the northerly side, there'll be 40 green giant abovidi screening plant that is shown on the plan. Total plantings are over 150 grasses, shrubs, and trees. What is now hard-packed gravel on the southerly side will be paved and striped, the pavement will assist in stormwater management and treatment, where currently you just have the hard-packed gravel. Most of the site, including where old asphalt exists, will receive new paving and striping as shown on the plans, there'll be stormwater management improvements and water quality units which will be installed, and Gabe Crocker from CHA will talk about that. Mass DEP stormwater management best practices are met as concerns the redevelopment. We've met with Ms. Santucci-Rozzi to review the staff report, we have addressed any of the details that have been outstanding, there's a couple of things like the sloped granite curb, which I know that when we were before the Conservation Commission, they wanted the sloped granite curb, that will be something that we will install. We were talking about concrete curbing, but we'll do the sloped granite curb. We think that any outstanding item in the staff report is easily addressed, and we respectfully ask for the board's support on this improvement project. With that, I'll turn it over to Gabe Crocker, and he can further explain the stormwater management.
Sure. Please. Hi, good evening, Gabe, almost good morning. Gabe Crocker of CHA Consulting, Registered Professional Civil Engineer for the project. Frank covered most of the operations stuff, so I'll skip over the majority of it. One thing I wanted to highlight is the existing, one of the keys here is the existing metal building in this location, its size and its shape really is what's bifurcating that parcel, and interrupts what could otherwise be much more orderly and efficient operations of the facility. So, by removing that building and constructing the new one in this configuration, it allows for very streamlined operations, the buses can enter, they can fuel, they can go through the wash bay, and then they can park. And so, that way, when the next bus driver comes in, they're able to pull out of their space and leave in an orderly fashion, so I think that really streamlines and organizes the operations. As part of that, Frank was mentioning the access for the service bays along the backside of the existing building. Right now, they're at dock height, so we'll be filling that portion of the site and sloping up from the existing grade here up to those docks, so that actually gives us an opportunity with the fill section that we're putting in there in order to improve store owner management, so we do have a proposed stormwater recharge facility that will take the new roof in that location. We do have fairly high groundwater and tight soil, so that's an opportunity where we've got this wedge that we're installing in order to make that improvement. Also, from an overall drainage perspective, we have the opportunity to improve water quality. This upper portion of the site, there's really two trunk lines that convey the majority of the drainage runoff for the building roof and the parking lot toward the wetland system on this end. So, as part of that, we will make some upgrades just from a grading perspective for catch basins, new drain manholes, but we're going to take the opportunity to put jellyfish filter systems prior to the discharge, that's a higher level of water quality treatment, it's a, you know, it's an actual filter cartridge system that will help filter the water to a much higher level and fully comply with current mass stormwater standards for TSS removal. And then, same coming down this way, we're able to install, with the sloping, we're able to better direct the runoff to catch, to new catch basins, drain manholes, and then ultimately to tie it into, through another water quality unit, a CDS unit, before re-entering the town system. So, it gives us an opportunity while we're doing this work to really make an improvement from a stormwater perspective and upgrade the site.
Thank you.
Happy to answer, any questions?
No, right now, what I do is always, I open up to the public, any comments, anything. I ask that you just identify yourself.
Oh, yeah. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Brian Bowen, I'm an attorney for Winnaker, Serkin, Rosenberg of Plymouth, and I represent the Roger E. Aiello Trust. As you can see from the plans, Mr. Aiello owns the property on the Pond Street side of this development site. I saw the advertisement, and I listened to its reading in, and I may have missed something, but I do not believe I heard any reference to a special permit under Article 7 of the bylaw for the buffer zone activities. And as I'm sure at least some members of the board know, and as the applicant knows, there's a long history of litigation involving this site. Mr. Aiello appealed a prior planning board decision issued in about 2009 that allowed McCourt Construction to conduct activities in there that were, at the time, are-
the time, or prior to that time, illegal and were being fined on a daily basis by the city, until finally they complied and applied for a special permit, which was then an after-the-fact permit. The courts heard that case and found that the planning board had exceeded its authority and had violated its own regulations under Article seven.
I, I don't know if that's exactly what...
That's a hundred percent true. All you have to do is read the appeals court decision.
Okay. I'm sorry. You know, it's always good, and I apologize, I don't want to be rude or anything, but it's always good to let the other person finish their statement before you jump all over them.
Okay.
Otherwise, it's really hard to have communication, don't you think so?
No, I appreciate that. There's just, it happens to be a real history here, and perhaps I'm assuming too much.
I was part of it, I know.
I know.
So, if you could just let me finish my statement.
Sure. I apologize.
As an attorney, I do the same thing you do, but I've never, ever jumped on a board when they're asking a question.
Fair enough. I apologize.
I appreciate that, that respect, too.
Certainly.
Thank you. Go ahead. I thought, I'm not sure, did we say Article seven?
Excuse me?
Did we do, you may be right. Do we do Article seven?
We advertised, this was filed for the work in the watershed, the new work that was described by the engineer and the attorney, and they also sought any modifications of any permits of record. This property has several decisions that have been outlined in the staff report, and based on the outcome of the site plans, we will make modifications to anything deemed necessary. I think we really don't want to get into the hashing out of the buffer zone, but the use of that area historically had existed. There are special permits back from nineteen ninety-four, and Attorney Marinelli has made it clear in his application that anything that is in conflict in those decisions, he seeks to be modified as part of this.
Okay. I didn't see any of this.
Well, in fairness, how would a member of the public reading this notice have any idea that it involved that? Basically, what we're being told is whatever needs to be done will be done. I had requested just prior to the start of Ms. Santucci if I could see a copy of the filed application for special permit, and I was told no. So, I would appreciate if...
I was told, I told you to put in a FOIA request, sir. I'm not going to give you the application here at the hearing.
It's a public document.
Follow it.
Excuse me. It's a public document, we're at a public hearing. I would like to see the application filed by this applicant that you're considering.
Okay.
I just want to look at it.
Okay.
May I?
Not now.
So, it's a public hearing, and I'm being denied...
No, 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 no. Don't listen, listen to me.
No, sir, you're cutting me off.
No, no, no.
You're cutting me off.
Listen to me. No, I'm not cutting you off. But you're playing a game right now.
I'm not playing any game. I'm representing my client.
Well, let me ask you a question. When were you retained?
For this particular hearing?
Yes.
Yesterday.
Okay. So, there was time to go up there and look at it, because it's always, you're absolutely a hundred percent right. You're a hundred percent right. It's a public, it's a public document, okay? But as you're well aware, it doesn't provide it at the second you ask for it, and that's unfair to do. That is absolutely unfair to do. You know that it's accessible to you, and it should be accessible to you, and it will be provided to you. But for you to sit here and say, "I want it right now," okay, is wrong, and you know that's wrong.
No.
We've both done this job for many years. I've been here doing, I've been representing applicants for almost thirty years, and I, you know, what you've done is just wrong right now. You're trying to, you're trying to make a battle where the battle doesn't exist.
I respectfully disagree, Mr. Chairman.
I know you do, but I still think you're starting a battle where the battle didn't exist. You could have called, you could have, it was available to the public, they always are. To sit here that you want it right now, right now, right here, is wrong. I know it's a public hearing. I absolutely know that.
It's a public document.
I absolutely know that.
Why can't I see a document in the file?
I understand you can, and it will be provided to you.
And how does that help me at this hearing?
But don't do this, don't do this dramatic thing, also sit down, "I want it right here, right now." That's wrong.
I did not say "right here, right now."
You just said, you just said that just now. You said, "I want it here, can I have it?"
Respectfully, I asked if I could see a public document. I was told no.
Right here, and you took a step back, and you said, "Can I see it now?"
Yes.
Okay, so you did say "right here, right now."
I didn't use those words. I asked, "Can I see a public document that's being considered at a public hearing, and I'm being told no?" So, I just want that record to show that.
At this moment, it will be provided to you, but at this moment, we're conducting a hearing. If you're saying, "Can we provide it to you?", absolutely, you're a hundred percent right.
And I'm just...
But don't do me a favor, don't start rolling the mud like this whole thing. I knew this was going to happen. Don't take on battles you don't have to right now. You're a hundred percent right. It will be provided to you, and it should be provided to you.
And how, if it's not provided to me at this hearing, how can I use it at the hearing if I don't have it?
Well, it would have been provided, but now you're saying, you, you obviously have to review it.
I would like to know why I can't have it now.
So, why don't we do this? We will provide it to you. No votes are going to be taken today. You're going to take it, you're going to review it, you're going to come back. I understand that, and I respect that.
All right. As long as it's going to be continued, that's fine.
I don't want to do the drama thing here.
I'm not trying to be a jerk, quite frankly, but I don't know, this was my only opportunity to request it. It seemed to me a reasonable request. If I'm being denied, let the record reflect that.
You're not being denied, it's going to be provided to you.
Well, then, give it to me, please.
We have a process, Mr. Chairman, as you know, for public records. We produce records every day in the office. Ask Louise. We have a process, we have to keep track of that. You can request it right on the website. It, it's right there. Fill it out, the documents are provided.
You know what? You don't even have to fill it out. Really, you know what? We'll give it to you. Just, let's go forward. No votes are going to be taken tonight.
Okay.
We're going to give it to you.
That's fine.
It, this was just stance you had to take that you really didn't have to take, because you know what? We never denied it from you. That's, that's, that's a mischaracterization of what happened here.
I appreciate that. I only requested it this evening because it was my first opportunity. I thought it was a reasonable request since it's a public document at a public hearing. We don't, I, I don't want to keep belaboring the point. I think you've made the position. I appreciate that it will be provided to me.
Absolutely.
Unfortunately, it just doesn't help me right now. But I believe, and listening to it, that just saying, "We're going to do whatever needs to be done," is not sufficient notice to the public. Because of the prior litigation involving this site, including when Academy was a tenant here, as the board may know, that special permit was voided by the court, and then it was withdrawn by McCourt. So, the only special permit that applies to this site right now is the nineteen ninety-four special permit. There are some very specific conditions imposed by the planning board in that nineteen ninety-four special permit. The reason why it's a special permit is because of the buffer zone Article seven. That's why it's a special permit. The prior, only prior valid use is light manufacturing, which was Ainsley. When the building was expanded and they were given a special permit to conduct light manufacturing. In the nineteen, in the two thousand and nine decision, this board allowed basically any use that could be conducted in a commercial zone. However, that permit no longer legally exists. So, since at least that point in time, all the activities being conducted there, all the uses are unauthorized because they're not light manufacturing. A commercial garage, this board never authorized those tenants and that use. And that is a condition of the nineteen ninety-four special permit. So, this, like McCourt, is an after-the-fact filing to legalize what has been, at least for some period of time, an illegal use. And the fact that these plans don't even show the buffer zone, I find it astonishing, given the history of this site, that I looked through the plans, and unless I'm missing something on the existing site condition, it doesn't even delineate the buffer zone that applies here. So, how you can get a special permit when you don't even show the area that you're seeking the permit on, on a plan is really beyond me. So, at a minimum, obviously, the plans need to be revised so that it shows the very zone that they're asking for special permission on. In addition, it is incumbent upon the applicant to establish why it needs a special permit under Article seven. You can't just get one because you feel like it. It has to demonstrate that as a result of something in the law, its frontage, its topography, that without the special permit, you cannot make reasonable use of the property. I would suggest to this board that's an impossibility, because by its very history, this site has shown that you can make use of this site without the special permit. And all the special permit says, gives them relief from the strict requirements of the buffer bylaw. Many years ago, this board promulgated the buffer zone bylaw, and the citizens of this city adopted it and implemented it. And it has certain requirements, none of which I think are being fully met here. One of its principal requirements is that the applicant provide a vegetated buffer zone that is effective to screen from my client's property, which is residential, year-round. And anyone who's been out to that site at all in the fall and winter, particularly where they're leaving a lot of it untouched, except for the part closer to Pond Street, there's no change in that whatsoever. It requires that there be evergreens. That's the only way you can get year-round coverage. And I understand that at least at the front part of the site, there's proposal for abovidi, which would help the screening out there. But the topography on the site, and the Article seven requires a fifty-foot per-inch plan. I don't know if the applicant has complied with that, because it's very hard to see the topo lines here. But my client's site sits above it. So, that kind of makes it easier for him to see onto the site, or any of the occupants on his property, to see the subject property. The very purpose of the buffer zone bylaw is to screen that, because the citizens of the city recognize that when you have a commercial district adjoining a residential district, which is what we have here, that's when you have a buffer zone. It's not a zone like we think of like commercial or residential. It's an area of protection referred to as a buffer zone, because it understands that you need to mitigate the impacts of commercial uses, which are the most intense in the city. There isn't an industrial district. So, the most intensive uses allowed by the city of Braintree, conducted next door to a residential district. And that's the very purpose of the buffer zone. It needs to screen it visually, and it needs, under normal special permit conditions, needs to account for odors and noise. And obviously, you know, what I've seen in the filings, they're going to be ripping up all the pavement. I don't know what mitigation measures are being proposed to reduce dust, noise from those activities that are going to be conducted in the buffer zone itself.
Is, is that an available resolution?
You mean, something to mitigate?
Yeah.
Uh, you...
If you look at the history, that was one of the very first things I asked and requested, "Give me a way to give you that, that zone."
Right.
And, and, let me finish. And the, the, the appellant said, "No, I just don't want it there." So, now the situation has changed, where the screening is important. I agree. I, I'm the one that said in the very beginning of the first case, "What do you want for screening?", because they should give you screening. Is that...
It is important.
Well, is that something that would be at this time, as requested in the past? Is that something that, that he would want?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I think it's, quite frankly, required under the bylaws since...
And I agree with you. And in fact, I tried to get them to agree to a screening process to help them, and the answer was no. They wanted to stop the, 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 the work being done there.
Hindsight's twenty-twenty.
I know, but I'm saying, if you, if you look at the record...
Just as a suggestion, if, you know, the applicant wants to have their engineers look at it, what was presented to the court from Mr. Aiello's engineer was CMU blocks that can be filled with earth to raise the height of the plantings. Because as I see from the topography, there's a ten-foot difference at one, at several points between my client's property being ten feet higher than the site. So, you know, already those sightlines, having a nine-foot tree isn't going to help very much, and that's ground level, let alone somebody living in, in one of the houses, one of which is thirteen feet from the line. It's been there for a long time. So, the visual impact is very significant. These are diesel buses, odors are a real concern as well, and I think all those measures are, have to, there has to be a proposal so that this, it shouldn't be up to the board to have to come up with ways of mitigating it. It should be up to the applicant to submit plans that make certain proposals, then they can be weighed. We can either say, "Why don't you do this?", and that way, it's a constructive process rather than, "Let's just get through the planning board, and then we'll file an appeal in court." My clients don't want to do that.
If, if you look at the history of even the prior case you're talking about, I think he can't deny it, is that from day one, I said, "Why don't we work on some sort of buffer, some sort of screening? What would satisfy?" And, and I think if you look at both the recorded and the, the video, because these all get televised, you'll see that a number of times I, I asked, "What can we do?". And as far as the planning board's role, we do this a lot with many people. Listen, "How can we get you together? I don't believe in putting a square peg in a round hole. And what I do believe is helping to shave it down so it fits nicely." And I've said that all along, and I offered that many, many times.
And the minutes reflect that. You know, they were admitted to court, and the minutes reflect that. But it's a new day, a new applicant, and a new project. But the concerns are similar, which is a very intensive use. I mean, you're talking about a lot of buses coming and going on this site. It's a watershed protection area. I think, you know, they've proposed certain measures that at least on my client's side might satisfy the zoning requirements. I'm not quite so sure on the Roxham side, but that's, that's somebody else's battle, not mine. Ours is really just the buffer zone. And, and the uses that are being conducted there, because right now, no legal use is occurring. It's not light manufacturing. And I think that the sooner that the applicant appreciates that fact and addresses in its filings a way of making sure that it is meeting the Article seven requirements of a year-round buffer, not just visual, but also under the, this is an alteration of a pre-existing non-conforming use. Because the only allowed use in a buffer zone is passive recreation. So, it is non-conforming. It's not our use as of right in the buffer zone. No commercial use is as of right in a buffer zone. Now, you go a foot out of the buffer zone, and it's commercial, but that's why the city created buffer zones, is that there are special rules that apply to that. And a, and a good portion of the building facing my client's, again, it's not shown on the plan, so I can't tell you exactly, but fifteen, twenty feet into the building is in the buffer zone. And so, those activities that are being conducted there have to be reviewed by this board and evaluated under the criteria set forth in Article seven, which is very detailed. And I think that having a filing that recognizes that and not just has, you know, as, as one sheet of fifteen sheets, a minimal planting plan, it doesn't meet this very specific requirement set forth in the zoning bylaw. So, those are our principal concerns at this time, both the proposed use that has to be legalized by this board, and the fact that, that there isn't a specific request, as far as I can tell, based on the public notice, of actually doing that, that would draw the attention of this board, who, you know, some of you know from history that it may apply here. But when an applicant, you know, the applicant here knows full well that this falls within the buffer zone, and yet chose to pretend as if it doesn't, because it's not even shown on the plans, and there's not a request specifically for the special permit that has to issue from this board, and only if it first demonstrates the requirement that there's something unique about this site that prohibits it from meeting the strict requirements of Article seven. Thank you.
Thank you.
Some might call that a filibuster. We call that complete obfuscation and disagree with all of the characterizations, legal or otherwise, that were made in that presentation. And the attorney, Mr. Bowen, apparently doesn't know that a cease and desist order was issued against the unit that he referred to as thirteen feet away. So, let's start with that. Mr. Aiello, next door, has a single-family zone property at 515 Pond Street. There's three mailboxes out front. On August, on, in August, I'm sorry, in November two thousand and seventeen, with three units on a single-family property, when the rest of us, to my knowledge, when you're in a neighborhood where it's a single family, you have one house. Three mailboxes, three mailboxes. Collecting rent for how long? That's the abutter. That's what we're dealing. That's the zoning violator. On November twentieth, two thousand and seventeen, Mr. Aiello received a letter from the Inspectional Services Department. You're hereby directed to immediately cease the use of the structure located at the front of the property for anything other than a single-family dwelling. You're also directed to immediately cease the use and occupancy of the dwelling located over the garage structure for any human habitation or any other use which is not accessory to a single-family dwelling. That structure was built as a bond. There are no permits for the dwelling unit that this gentleman just referred to as a dwelling unit thirteen feet from the property. I wonder if he told the appeals court that? I wonder if he told the appeals court that when the appeals court referred to a single-family dwelling within eleven feet of the property line? You can smirk, Mr. Bowen, but I think it's, you either, you, you either didn't know or were they misled?
We got our client's statement.
Yeah, you brought it up. You brought up the thirteen feet. The thirteen feet should be disregarded. There's no valid unit thirteen feet from the property line. In his deposition in two thousand and twelve, Mr. Aiello referred to, "Oh, the problems In his deposition in 2012, Mr. Aiello referred to, oh, the problems that his daughter had, putting his daughter in the unit. He put his daughter in an invalid unit. He put his daughter in an invalid unit, and then complained against the commercial property for noxious fumes. That's what's going on. That was complete disingenuous presentation, because the attorney himself, on August 1st, wrote to Inspektional Services to try to get enforcement of what he just presented to you. He says on page two of his letter of August 1st, "And order Franma and other occupants of 531 Pond Street," my client at that time, and we have nothing to do with the McCourt case, by the way. He can ballyhoo the McCourt case, because his client spent a lot of money hiring him to take forward the McCourt case, got nothing to do with us. "531 Pond Street, immediately cease and desist from using any portion of the buffer zone for any use other than as authorized as right, until such time as the planning board issues a new special permit in compliance with the decision." He already told Inspektional Services what he tried to tell you again tonight, almost a year, 10 months later. Guess what? Inspektional Services responded on August 16th of 2017, saying, no violation. None of the things that he tries to suggest need to happen, have to happen. They were denied, they lost on August 16th. Under 48, 8, and 15, you need to appeal within 30 days, never appealed. Under 48, Section 8, and 15, Aiello needed to appeal any cease and desist order against the bond invalid dwelling unit 13 feet from the property line, within 30 days. Never did it. He's out. That's an invalid unit. There's only one valid unit at 515 Pond Street. That's what the Inspektional Services unappeal letter says. And as for everything that Mr. Bowen said tonight, there is no need for a special permit. That was decided too, and that's over. So, those are the facts, Mr. Chairman, and, you know, if he was engaged yesterday, he had time to go and read everything, rather than get up here and mischaracterize things. We have a good project, we have stormwater improvements, we have improvements that enter the building on the southerly side, minimizing the bus entry from the northerly side. We're doing everything right, with a reputable company of 50 years. That is not, that's a zoning violator, that was just up here being represented. A zoning violator, versus what we're trying to do. We follow the process. That was complete disingenuous mischaracterization, as evidenced by the failure of his August 1 letter, the fact that his client is under order to cease and desist. Those are the questions. Has the bond unit been vacated? You know, there's a lot of questions that can be asked. Thank you.
Thank you.
We ask for approval.
Okay. I think you wanna, you wanna jump into the fray, feel free.
I'm Todd Hamilton, I represent 66 and 77 Roxanne Park Road. I have some issues with it, but knowing, I know Frank for a long time, and what I'd like to do, I know you're gonna continue the hearing, is I'd like to sit with Frank, and see if we can work stuff out. I'm not here to, not here to kill everybody. The whole street is tough, we all know it, it floods. So I just like, before I make a comment or say anything, I just wanted to say that, at the next hearing, I'll come back, or I may not come back. But that's what I'd like to do, is sit with Frank, and see what we come up with. I didn't know he was the attorney until tonight, which is a good thing to me.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, all right.
I think that there were, and maybe the board should hear from his professional staff.
Oh yes, we will.
We met with, and I think that this is appropriate for draft conditions for the next meeting.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, very quickly, given the hour, I did have an opportunity to put together a staff report, and did have an opportunity to discuss the stormwater improvements with the applicant's engineer, as well as Kelly Phelan, who's reviewing this on behalf of the Conservation Commission. And I do have to say, they're working on additional improvements that will be coming forward at the next meeting in regards to stormwater, and pulling pavement out of the 25-foot no- disturb. They're really, in the staff's opinion, putting a lot of upgrades into the site, where basically, they're demolishing some buildings and putting up some smaller buildings. But the improvement from the circulation standpoint, this site now becomes compliant with the watershed overlay, from a coverage perspective. Reorientation of the site, now the site can be serviced both from Pond Street and Roxanne Park Drive, really opens up opportunity for improvement in circulation, and parking, and access from the staff's standpoint. As far as the special permit for the buffer zone, again, you know, in the staff's opinion, the use of that area has existed for some time. Allowing the use of the building for byright uses is something that this board does quite often. There was also a zoning board decision, I believe back in 2004, that allowed the building to be subdivided into multiple tenants, so the authorization to modify the building was done at that time as well. There is a request, there are some conditions, right, related to this building. When the planning board looked in 1994, for the special permit for the buffer, and the addition was constructed, the board at that point did impose conditions on a portion of the building, on a very small portion of that building. It's required to be used for storage. The applicant is seeking permission to continue the spirit of that condition, and put some storage on the second floor, and to use a portion of the first floor for storage, but to also have some offices in there. The use of the, I should say, the storage needs of this tenant, the Academy bus, doesn't require first floor sort of loading in, and that type. My discussions with them, it's gonna be mostly staff, the office storage, paper, things like that, up on the second floor, accounting files, receipts, those things of that nature. So the staff did raise a couple things in the staff report. We're working on those back and forth items about the curbing, plan details, and things like that. And at this point, the staff is requesting to start working on putting together some draft conditions and approvals, if things are in order before the next meeting.
Chairman, if I may, just to briefly respond to the staff comments. As I'm sure the staff is aware, the buffer zone is kind of different, because two boards have jurisdiction over the buffer zone. And again, when I say buffer zone, we're talking about the Article VII, between commercial and residential districts. The ZBA has jurisdiction to issue a permit concerning changes in structures within the buffer zone. So it has nothing to do with uses. The planning board is the board with special permit granting authority over uses. So what the ZBA did, in terms of allowing the garage doors and what have you, even though it was ultimately designed to be able to get new tenants in, the 1994 special permit says specifically that this planning board has to approve any new tenants. It hasn't approved these tenants that are in there now. And even absent a special permit condition that governs this, it is required under the bylaw, because it is, it's a pre-existing non-conforming use. And so, the findings that are required for an Article, Section 6, Chapter 48, Section 6, special permit, also need to be met in this case. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like the board to take note of the statement that was just made. The 1994 special permit says that the planning board has to approve the tenants. I wanna see that in the decision. I wanna see where that is in the decision. And I think the board should ask its staff to identify, where is that in the decision? That the planning board, that the 1994 special permit, just stated, asserted here, says that the planning board has to approve tenants.
That's...
That's just not the case. And there's no ability to challenge the commercial use of the transition area in the building, or circulation, and parking on the northerly side. The appeals court didn't find that, and it was briefed, the appeals court didn't find that, he didn't tell you that. It has existed for decades. In 2004, the zoning board unanimously granted the petition to renovate the existing 70,000-square-foot building into, quote, "five separate tenant spaces to become a multi-tenant facility, housing occupancies like light manufacturing, warehouse, vehicle maintenance, business, and retail tenants," end quote. Building repositioned, five tenants, can partition it up. The 1994 special permit didn't say anything about, you can't do this or that. It was acknowledging the fact that this transition area has been used for decades, both in the building and outside. Why would the zoning board put garage doors, authorize alteration not substantially more detrimental, to allow five, however many garage doors were inserted at that time, without the ability to use one side of the garage door in the building, and the other side for circulation and so forth, for contractors, for uses by right? The argument defies logic. This is long established, and it's been granted by the zoning board. No one can contend that further approval is necessary to occupy the transition area with byright uses, parking and circulation, which has existed for years. The zoning board found that dividing the building into five commercial tenant spaces with overhead doors connecting to the northerly parking lot were not substantially more detrimental, and granted any variance in relief necessary to partition the building, and to install overhead doors, so that those commercial uses could use all of the building and the northerly side connected by the approved overhead doors. So, those are the facts, those are the decisions. Again, we agree with what the staff has suggested in terms of the history to this site. We've presented it in detail to the board in the application. And again, we respectfully request the opportunity to discuss with the staff, whatever small items are outstanding. CHA has done a very meticulous job in all of the plans, the water quality, water treatment improvements, and all of the things that were described tonight, Mr. Chairman. The special permit need is just the fact that we're taking down a building in the watershed. That's Section 609, if anybody reads it, Section 609. If you're doing development, that's what triggers the special permit, is the taking down of the building, and building a new one. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, everybody. Continue, yeah, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we continue this to the next meeting.
Okay, just a sec. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, motion to adjourn?
We have to approve minutes.
No, you know what?
Wait, we have two as-bills.
Oh, just... Yeah, the next meeting's July, yeah. Let's get going, I have a vicious headache.
We have two as-bills. No?
Let's move along.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm done.
I hear you, Mr. Chairman.
A second, yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Frank, can you sign the extension form?
Did you know there's people coming in? That door over there?
Oh, really?